Welcome to the September 10, 2020, meeting of the Town and Southampton Planning Board. In accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 202.1. And until further notice, all of the board's meetings will be held remotely by a video conference. So we ask the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. Phil, can we have a roll call?
Sure. Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finerty.
Present.
Secretary is here. Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Zuccarelli.
Present.
Board Member Blaney.
Present.
Board Member Burke.
Present.
We have everyone here.
Full board. Thank you. Can you please join in for a pledge of allegiance? My pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any minutes, Phil?
Yes, we do. We have the minutes for July 23rd.
Motion to accept those. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria on July 23rd. Thank you.
Giles, if you could let Brant in from Interscience. And I think he's got a couple others he wants in too. I just don't have their names.
Are we doing the work session?
Okay, I have to read the rest of the preamble. We have a full agenda posted on the town's website for today's meeting. The town's planning staff, as well as applicants and their representatives, will be participating via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Surtin will be muting and holding speakers in a virtual waiting room until it's their time to give testimony before the board. A reminder that applicants and their agents should state their name and address for the record. As is typical, there are no public comments allowed during our daytime meetings. A link to participate in this meeting via Zoom can be found on the town's website. This meeting is also being livestreamed on the town's website on the Town Clerks Meeting Portal. If you're having difficulty accessing the meeting, please visit the Town Clerks Meeting Portal and click on the instructions link. Board members who must recuse themselves from any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the discussion and vote on the application. Finally, in accordance with the Governor's order, this meeting will be recorded and transcribed at a later date and will be made available to the public. So with that, we'll go in order and we have a work session. So I'll close the afternoon session and open the work session on Bridgehampton Commons. Claire, who do you have here coming on?
Brant from Interscience.
On his way.
Great.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
Right.
Claire, do you want to give us an overview?
Sure, just one second. Brant, anyone else you'd like in?
Yes. Charles, could you let in Tim McCully? Chris Simonello? And Doris Ennis?
And then I'm just gonna start as those people are coming in. Share my screen. So everybody's familiar with the Bridgehampton Commons. Over the years, we've looked at some signage for the projects on the site. You can see that, right? Good. This is the original master sign plan. It's a little old. I think it's 1990, if I remember correctly. And in it, the planning board was given, gave the opportunity, approved this so that the applicants, the owner of the property, could change out signage if you followed their certain direction. And it's very specifically color blue and simple wording on the prop that was given. So this is the master sign plan I included in the packet. This is an example. Guidelines. So the applicants here to say, to discuss an update to this. Slowly do this for you. And this would be the existing, to the left, the existing staple sign. I'm gonna have them explain this, but to the right, they'd like to use the colors for the the business colors on this. And in this case, the blue for the existing sign there. And they'd like to update the colors. I think when we discussed it, it was green with gold letters. But I'm gonna have them.
I can't even read that. What does it say?
Oh, yeah. You know, it's very difficult to, to, this is just an example, obviously. But there is something more specific. So I want to have them explain to you. And then, once we do, we can maybe zoom in a little bit on the details if it comes through. There's the King Cullen.
Open 24 hours, I see.
Yeah, it's there now with the blue here. Existing.
Oh, I see. It's a Petco sign. All right.
Okay, so Brant, are you giving this presentation?
I'm going to lead off and I'm going to then hand it over to Doris, who is a representative from Kimco, the owner of the shopping center. So Charles is, or Claire, can you tell if Doris is on? I can't see her.
Okay.
Yes, she is.
Doris, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great.
So I'm just going to quickly introduce, I mean, Claire, they're really good job of recapping what's going on. I'll offer a quick introduction and hand it over.
Can you also please just give us your name and address, each one of you, when you speak? So we have that for the record?
Yep.
Thank you.
So Brant Reiner from Interscience Research Associates, 36 Nugent Street, Southampton, New York, 11968. Representative for Kimco, the owner of the shopping center. We're here today to, I'm here today with Doris Ennis from Kimco, Chris Simonello from Kimco as well, and Tim McCully from Burke and Sullivan, attorney for Kimco. We would like to speak with you today about the idea of updating the master sign plan. I'm going to let Doris give you an overview of Kimco's thought process behind this. And then we'll jump into any other details that the board would like to discuss about the project. So at this time, Doris, I'd like to hand it over to you.
For the record, my name is Doris Ennis.
We can't hear you.
Audio is not good.
Nope.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. For the record, my name is Doris Ennis, on behalf of Kimco Realty, located at 500 North Broadway in Jericho, New York, 11753. As Brant mentioned, I'll provide a brief overview of the proposed changes to the master sign plan for Bridgehampton Commons. Bridgehampton Commons, located at the intersection of Montauk Highway and State Hall Road, is a destination shopping center servicing the East End market. The center is anchored by Kmart, King Cullen, and TJ Maxx, and offers an array of essential goods and services to year-round residents and seasonal visitors. Although it is essential to the market, brick and mortar retail continues to be challenged by e-commerce and consumer preferences. The COVID-19 pandemic has further exacerbated the situation. It has forced businesses to reevaluate their strategies to meet market trends. Businesses must adapt quickly to survive and remain relevant. They have found new ways to reimagine their services to maintain and attract customers. Now more than ever, we support their efforts by giving them every opportunity to survive in the short term and thrive in the long term. One of the ways to do so is to ensure that their presence is known through signage. Signage is an essential part of any retail operation. It needs to be clear, visible, and recognizable to attract and retain customers. We've lost potential tenants because of the current signage restrictions. Therefore, we are proposing changes to the 30-year-old master sign plan to give our tenants greater visibility within the center. The current sign plan consists of tired, powdered blue lettering over white panels. The color scheme is no longer reflective of a first-class shopping center and lacks clear legibility. We are proposing to update the signage to allow prototypical colors and branding for our larger tenants. While the smaller tenants will receive uniform signs consisting of gold letters over a green background. The proposed green and gold signings will provide improved visibility, a timeless high aesthetic, and complement the existing monument sign that bears the center's name. Notably, this center does not have a multi-tenant pylon sign. It just has the monument sign. Current wall signs are buffered by landscaping that obscures visibility from the road. These factors greatly heighten the need for improved tenant branding and identification within the interior of the shopping center. We want customers to easily identify store locations and feel that the proposed changes are what's best. We welcome the opportunity to work with you to update the master sign plan to ensure the enduring success of the center while maintaining a first-class aesthetic standard. Thank you.
So, so just to clarify from that, what you've said. The anchor stores like Walgreen, King Cullen are in red and the rest of the signage is uniform in the green and gold?
Correct. But what I'm saying is that the larger tenants will have prototypical signage and branding.
What does that mean?
Whatever is typical to their prototype. So like their typical staples has a standard prototype that they use on their stores. And we're proposing to have that be put in place so that their brands are recognized within the center.
Is the example that we have here what you mean?
Yes.
Staples in red rather than?
Blue.
Blue.
Correct.
King Cullen in red rather than blue?
Correct. And then all the smaller tenants would have the basic green and gold panels.
The only thing, if I could jump in, Jack, I mean, the only thing that becomes apparent, you know, I don't think we have a big issue with what's being proposed, but the advantage of a master sign plan is that you don't have to come in. It sort of streamlines the process. While the brands you're proposing probably have appropriate signage, there are some national brands that may bring inappropriate signage to the site. So each one would have to be reviewed as you change tenancy.
Right.
Either by this board or by the ARB or probably both.
I think what we would be looking for is the same color and sizing of the, of those large anchor stores.
So if I may just add on to what Doris is talking about. We are here today to make adjustments to the master sign plan, to update it per se into current situations and what we perceive, or the Kimco's perceives as the future of brick and mortar retail. We would ask the board to understand that majority of the signage in the site will remain uniform. And, you know, we would, they would like to go from blue and white to gold and green. But the only stores that would have changes to the color or special font types would be the anchor stores, which is probably around a half dozen or so. And, yeah, that's a good view right there, Claire. It shows an overview. So the idea is that the master sign plan would read such that the anchor stores, we would define them by either size or by their location in the site, would be subject to planning board and ARB approval as they change tenants or as they change signage. The master sign plan would speak to that specifically. So the uniformity of the center would remain gold and green for all of the non-anchor stores. And that would be specific to the master sign plan update. And the master sign plan update would also read that the tenants, the anchor stores would require additional planning board and ARB review. So the board could review them, discuss them with the applicants on a per-sign basis.
Yes, but it sounds to me like you're, what you're showing one thing and you're meaning something different. Are you saying that all of the anchor stores will be in red? All of the smaller stores will be in the green and gold uniform?
No, the sign plan shows, if you can see there, the Alta, it's very small, but in the top right of that view, the Alta store, as an example, is like a light orange color. It's that, it's the prototypical signage for Alta. So Alta would, would like to use its color and signage. King Cullen happens to be red and Staples happens to be red, so that's why your eyes are drawn to a red color. Marshalls and TJ Maxx will have red for TJ Maxx and blue for Marshalls, as is typical for their branding worldwide. So the idea here is to create the anchor stores, give the anchor stores a purpose. Now, they, they're the major draw for these shopping centers and they're, they're helpful in keeping them alive, especially during these difficult times. So the master sign plan would, again, single out those, those stores that we would identify on a survey or a site plan to say, when these signage, when these tenants change their signage, they would need to come back to the planning board.
So it's not a master plan, then? You understand what Dennis was saying? That each time your anchors change, they would have to come in here for color, size, logo, when in fact it takes it out of the category of the master plan as I see it?
Right. You're both correct. And we understand that this is a unique situation. The idea is, though, probably 80% to 85% of the stores in the shopping center are smaller and would remain consistent with the master sign plan that's gold and green. So the idea is to take the bulk of the review out of the planning board and ARB's hands by creating a master sign plan that addresses the smaller tenants and only require that the larger tenants come back to the planning board for changes to signage because they would not meet the master sign plan.
Well, we want to keep it in our hands. This is the largest shopping center in the area. And we managed to keep it good-looking. Yes, I think an upgrade is probably needed and wanted. But when you begin to have different colors, particularly in the larger anchor stores, larger type sizes, then you have a whole different animal and you don't have a master plan. Gloria, you?
Yeah, I'm gonna take that a little bit further. I think what the suggestion is, is to make this look like every other shopping center in the United States as opposed to something that is unique to our community. And so I really don't like this idea personally.
Robin?
Yeah, two questions. Have your studies shown that the gold and green is more either eye-attractive, identifiable from the road? What was the thinking behind going with the gold and green? And the second part to that question is, if we said okay to the gold and green, would it be a uniform changeover where all the stores would change to gold and green? Or we're gonna have a piecemeal of the blue and white and then gold and green when you get a new tenant?
So I'm gonna answer the second part. The first part I'll defer to Kimco, either Doris or Chris. So the second part of that is, all of the smaller tenants would change to gold and green consistently. They'd go from the blue and white to the gold and green. The larger stores, like I said, which is about six, they would, they would be the ones that we're looking for, the special exception.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to know if there would be a changeover immediately so that we'd have at least consistency amongst the smaller stores immediately. Is that correct?
Yep. So.
And then the reasoning behind going gold and green is that eye-catching, more study-wise, consumer-oriented?
Yeah. Hi, yeah. This is, this is Chris Simonello from Kimco. Same, same address as Doris, 500 North Broadway, Jericho, New York, 11753. I'm the Director of National Development for, for the company. And it's a very good question. The reason why we chose gold and green is to complement the existing monument sign that only bears the center's name but doesn't include tenant panels. So when driving on Montauk Highway, yes, you can identify that Bridgehampton Commons is there. But, but passerby traffic, including local residents and seasonal visitors, don't know who the tenants are in the commons. So the first reason is to complement the monument sign. The second reason is that the existing sign plan is 30 years old. And after taking a look at it over the past couple of years, it's grown tired and it's, it's not identifiable when you're, once you're in the center or it's certainly not visible from the road because of the landscape buffer that serves, you know, that serves a purpose. And the third reason is the green and gold really catches the eye and makes, you know, makes the signs pop and more identifiable once customers are in the center. To touch on the anchor tenants, you know, they, they spend millions of dollars on, on their branding. And the idea is to attract customers, once they're in the center, to those anchor locations because they are the drivers of, of foot traffic, which in these challenging times, challenging retail landscape, we have to give our retailers every opportunity to survive and ultimately succeed for the long term.
Do you have an example here that you've presented of these monument signs? That would, I haven't seen one.
The, the existing monument sign?
You want to change that, right?
We do not want to change that. We're not changing that at all.
No, he's just making a match.
Yeah, the existing monument signs reads Bridgehampton Commons and it's green and gold. And the smaller tenants, their, their wall signs will mirror the monument sign.
Okay, so you're, you're not changing in any way the monuments on?
Not at all.
Adding?
Not at all. We, we wouldn't do that to you.
Now, may I ask, continuing with, now going now to the, the store, the anchor stores. The size, I understand you want to use the coloration that would be branding. And I guess the style of lettering that would match with your branding is their branding. But would the size of the lettering all be consistently the same?
They, they, we're not proposing any changes to the size of any sign.
Okay.
So whatever is there right now, as far as total square footage, is what we're proposing. We're simply just asking to swap out the faded blue with green and gold for the smaller tenants.
Yeah, I got that.
And so, no, we're not asking for any changes to the, the size of the signs. We think that the sizes are fair and are adequate for the center.
But have you submitted the anchor signage so that we could take a look at it? I see Staples. I see King Cullen.
Sure, yeah. It's, Claire, I think there, there's more to, there's more to the presentation. So you'll see Kmart.
Okay, there's Kmart.
Yep.
And that go red. TJ Maxx is blue.
Right.
I mean, red.
TJ Maxx is red.
Marshalls is blue.
Marshalls is blue. Walgreens is red.
So I think you could probably do a quiz on Marshalls and nobody would know that Marshalls was blue. I certainly didn't know Marshalls was blue. So what happens is that you have an outlier to this master plan, which makes it difficult.
No, actually, the Alta store is different, too.
Yeah, it's orange. It's orange. Yeah.
Well, you know, I respectfully disagree with my wonderful colleague Gloria in that I don't see a problem with being able, these anchor tenants being able to use the branding and, and the color they favor. I don't think it makes it look like every other shopping center in America. I just think it's, it's fair to allow them to do this. And over the years, I mean, how many times has an anchor tenant changed? I think what we had, Kmart come in. We've obviously had Marshalls come in, but.
And Marshalls.
I mean, you know, if it's once or twice every 10 years, I don't think that puts a particular burden on the planning board to say yea or nay for a sign change.
Can you continue scrolling down, Claire?
After this, I think it comes, this is the actual more details.
So Claire, if you could scroll down to the picture plan, there's a collage of photographs that we submitted. It'll just show you what the views look like from the street. So one thing I'd like the board to recognize, which I'm sure you all know because you've driven by this site many a times, is there's been special attention paid, paid to the vegetation around the property. So the aerial, you can see that there's heavily vegetated screening from the road. And there is heavily vegetated screening from State Hall Road as well, so.
And that's what makes it the Bridgehampton Commons in the.
Right, right. And so the idea is that, and Kimco believes that it makes it challenging for their anchor tenants to really get their branding out. So they'd like to do that once patrons enter into the property. So I think the planning board gets the best of both worlds here. They work with a shopping center that serves a purpose to all of us here in the East End. And they're also protecting the community by the vegetated screen that's around the center itself.
Right, as long, we have to protect that vegetation, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
No cutting.
It goes into doing it.
As it once was.
So if I may, just to understand, make sure I have this clear. On the anchor, I'm talking only of the anchor. There is no change in the size of the lettering, just the style and the color. Is that correct?
I believe actually that they're only changing the color because.
No change in the style.
The styles, the styles are already what they want them to be.
So it's just the color?
Just the colors, yeah.
Okay.
If, if, if I remember correctly, it hasn't been changed. There's a square footage relationship between the size of the sign and the wall that it's being put on. That's a controlling factor, that they can't take a sign and make it two and three times size. It has to be within that area. So I don't think there's a concern of size getting outlandishly big.
Not like Petco over in Hampton Bay, right?
Yes. But that may make it a ratio. That's the point.
Are these, are these all the images that, that we have?
The Architectural Review Board has a greater knowledge on the concept of signs. I think it should go there eventually.
Do you want to send it to the ARB? And then, I mean, I'm not hearing a big no. I'm.
Well, let's, let's, let's just poll the board, if we may.
Sure.
See where people stand on this. How does everybody feel?
I think it's, it's good. It's nice. It's pleasing. One of the things that we had on the Architectural Review Board was not to have a medley of all different signs and colors. And he seems to have gotten that by having the smaller stores a consistency, giving the larger anchor stores the right to have a larger sign and be more visible.
Not larger, but a different color. Yeah. They're gonna stay the same size as they are.
I'm saying, but it's still gonna be compared to the smaller size, it's larger.
Yes.
I would agree. This is a good, good setting.
I agree with John's assessment as well.
This, this is Phil. I agree with what, what's proposed.
Robin?
I have, as long as, with the understanding that all of the smaller stores would change at once, so we didn't have a mishmash of coloring. All stores are turning to the gold and green and the sizes are staying the same. We're just talking about a color change. I have no objection.
Gloria?
I guess I'll, the lone, the lone guy out.
And I don't, I have a, I know a statistic going back probably ten years, when I was still in the retail world. And the the Kmart in Bridgehampton was the highest grossing Kmart in the United States. So I don't think they need to let people know they're there. People know they're there.
Well, their sign is not essentially going to change.
I I realize that, I'm just
I I have reservations because we need to know the red, we need to know colors, exact colors that are going in.
This is, this is definitely an overview. I recommend, I mean, obviously, it's a modification to the site plan. I'd recommend a public hearing, ARB. We need details, obviously, you've got ideas. You know, the, I would just comment, the Alta has a swish now. It's hard to tell, because you, you know, you're only looking at the screen. But, you know, public hearing process, I mean, this is their first presentation to you, and I hear mostly positive. They've submitted an application, and they pro, you process it, right?
So we actually would have to amend the master plan.
Which is part of the sign plan. An application.
Yeah. And and then have that in place, so that if Kmart were to leave, and another tenant, anchor tenant comes in, they need to follow the guidelines that are in the master plan.
Great. Okay.
Okay, that's good.
Good.
Okay, so I will close the, we'll close the work session.
Thank you all, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brad.
Yes, thank you very much for your time, we we appreciate it. And please stay safe out there.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, bye.
Okay, I'd like to reopen the afternoon planning session. And Jackie will go to number two, pad construction.
Hello, just give me a moment to share the screen.
Do you need someone in?
There may be Randall Whitebrock, Wrightbrock. He did, I did discuss it with him last week, so I'm not sure if he's in attendance today.
We always get to see your beloved dog, Jackie.
Oh, yes.
Good.
Here you go, can you see that now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. So this is a resolution, and actually, we did review this, and we deemed it incomplete in May of 2020. The applicant did submit revisions to the plan, which matched the ZBA decision that was granted previously. I think it was last fall, which is, yes, November seventh, 2020, as you can see right here.
It's 2019, Jackie.
Oh, yeah, you're right. I will change that.
I was going to email you, but I never got around to it, because it's a typo.
No problem, yeah, it's definitely like an automatic typo. But so I was recommending that it be deemed incomplete again, although I did want to let the board know that I just got the revised plans. Sorry, I'm trying to exit the full screen. I don't know why it's not exiting. Anyways, I did get revised plans from the applicant, which had minor note details, the ownership, a lot of the small detail items that we asked for noting on the plans. But this is the plan, and you can see this is going to be, this is the ZBA decision. And this is the property. So this is the restaurant in Hampton Bays. I think Centro is the name of it.
Oh, okay.
It's in bearings, and this is Montauk Highway as you're heading toward
Of twenty-four.
Yes. West.
West. No. If it's Centro, it's east. Am I screwed up?
No, it's it's west of twenty-four. It's west of like Hampton Bays proper. This is on your way to
I'm thinking of a different restaurant, sorry.
Oh, it's okay, no problem. But I was going to deem it incomplete, although the applicant did just on Tuesday, after I alerted them that their plans just were missing the minor notes, that they did provide those by email to me Tuesday, and hard copies are on the way. So if the board is comfortable, I can change my recommendation to completeness and schedule a public hearing.
Are you comfortable with an applicant getting stuff in so late?
Yeah, I mean, it was minor notes. So he, they had made the changes for the two lot subdivision to match the ZBA, which was the main substance of it. And those were the ones that were handed in in late August. So I am, I am comfortable. And then we can send out referrals. And I have to admit, I don't know the exact hearing date this was, because this would be for October eighth, I guess, if there's room on the agenda.
There's, we've accounted for four already. I I don't, can't speak for Pat, Patty, but could you put him on for the Uber meeting?
He didn't request any specific date, so. On the second, that's fine.
So we're going to deem it complete and schedule a public hearing for October?
October twenty-second.
October twenty-two. Okay, can I have a Dennis motion, second? Second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension seven in favor.
Great, thank you very much.
Matthew, Shinnecock Hardware East?
Yes, Shinnecock Hardware East. This is completeness for a special exception application. It's for a thousand gallon above-ground propane tank accessory to the hardware store that's there. Plans, if you can see right here, I know it's a little small, but right there is where the tank is going to go. This was originally deemed incomplete in October of 2019. Just been waiting on a couple revisions, stuff from the town engineer as well, but they've gotten everything in. So we're looking to deem this complete and set a hearing for October eighth, 2020.
Do you hear him required?
Yeah, it's a special exception, Dennis.
Okay.
And they've provided all of the safety ballards around this.
Yep.
Okay. So can I have a motion to deem this complete and set a hearing for October eighth?
Motion.
Motion by Zakarelli, second by Phil, all in favor? Opposed, extensions, seven in favor. Number four, Claire, Edgewater Motel.
I received a site plan application. They received, there's ZBA variances for the reduced buffer in the rear, and also for the motel being changed into workforce housing, with special exception standards. They submitted an application, but it is incomplete. There's a number of items, and town engineer needs to have an update. So those those items are noted in the checklist provided. So I'm recommending deem it in completes.
Okay, motion? Motion by Dennis, second by?
Second.
Who said that?
I did first.
You did first, sorry, Gloria, and all in favor? Opposed, extension seven in favor. Claire, Atlantic Golf Club, the stuff, housing?
So we, the board saw this a couple weeks ago.
This is a separate pond, right?
Yeah, as a work session. Right, exactly here. It's supposed to be located in this area. It would be within West, what lands jurisdiction, however, it's proposed to meet the standards. So they've submitted the application, very similar to what was discussed. There is more, he's provided a little bit more information. Jackie, I think you've asked asked it to be like reorientated. But then there is like clearing here that they just want to avoid any additional clearing on the property. So to reorientate it would be more difficult to do that. But that's all information we could go through the pre-submission report with. So I'm recommending the scheduled for pre-submission conference for October eighth.
October eighth for pre-submission conference. Motion?
Motion.
Gloria, and second by Zakarelli, all in favor? Opposed, extensions, seven in favor.
Charles, if you could let Eric Bregman in, and possibly Jeff Souchman?
We haven't seen this for a while, right?
The watermill, gas, village townhouses. Yeah, this, this has been, it's still valid approval. You approved it maybe late last year. And I'm just have to go through this.
And then they had to have the soil remediated.
That's right, exactly. So this is a description of what's of what's being changed on the property, so I included that in there.
Can't read that, Claire.
I know.
I read it just fine. Oh, there it is.
Sorry.
There we go.
My mediability.
So they're modifying it.
Yeah, that's, this is the, these are the changes. So the lot coverage, building cover, meets zoning.
Building change from nineteen. Needs parking, additional bedroom, would require one.
I thought because of the the interest in this, that it would need a public hearing. And we want to process it, you know, put through the, you know, full review. Town engineer is definitely involved, ARB, the architectural styles are changing. So we'll just treat this like a site plan. Obviously, a lot of the issues have been addressed. We'll focus on these issues and get the referrals. So I'm recommending a a hearing on this and, you know, full site plan review. Okay, October.
I I do have a question.
Sure.
Adding a bunch of bedrooms, correct?
They're adding one bedroom for some of the units. The applicants are here, I believe. Do you want to ask them a question?
Well, I'm just, they're putting, there's going to be an onsite septic system, I believe.
Yes, yeah.
That may have
Food and plants, yep.
So the the septic system may have to be modified. It goes extra bedroom, that that was just my point.
Yeah, that's a good point, exactly. So health department updated.
May I speak?
Sure.
Okay, we we actually enclosed a letter from the
Please, sorry.
I'm sorry?
That's all right.
Yeah, Jeff Souchman, one seven four, two halls of Water Road, East Hampton. We actually enclosed a letter from the septic engineer stating that no modifications needed to be made to the septic system. We also enclosed a letter from the traffic engineer citing the fact that no, you know, there would be no additional burden on traffic from adding the twenty-four bedrooms.
You're adding twenty-four bedrooms, so your septic will accommodate that without any
Yes, yes, in fact, there is a letter enclosed in the application from the septic engineer.
We're going to send that off to the health department for verification.
Okay, fantastic.
Any other questions? We're going to schedule this for a hearing on October eighth. No other questions? Can I have a motion to?
I'm sorry, how many do we have on for the eight already?
This would be number four.
Four, okay.
And that's the end.
Motion, I'll move it.
Motion by Zakarelli, second by Robin, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension seven in favor? Hearing on October eighth, thank you. Okay, Matthew, number seven, Pucci O'Landrava.
This is just a request for another extension. Mr. Pucci is working with his engineer, I think, to reorient the building so he can get close to those parking requirements. This is for pre-submission. She was asking for another extension for the deadline to adopt that pre-submission conference report.
Is that a sufficient extension, or is he going to come back?
He, I, that's what I I've inquired as well, because I know this is the second time we've had to do this. I said, you want to go into October, Louie? He said, no, he will be done and ready for the twenty-fourth.
And he'll get information to you before?
Yes.
Okay, so motion for an extension?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by Robin, all in favor? Opposed, extensions, extension seven in favor? For number seven, Pucci extension to September twenty-four. Number eight, which is not on here, it's an addition, North Sea Store, Matthew?
Yep, this is another extension. This is for the former Autos Deli. Just give me one second, I'll bring you guys up in the aerial. Now, if you recall, they're doing a handicap ramp in the front. They're still working on getting their surveys updated as well. I guess they're having a little trouble with their surveyor. So they're asking for an extension ninety days. It'll take us to December fourteenth for submission of plans for signature.
So they want an extension to?
Yep. Yep, it's ninety day extension, it'll take us to December fourteenth. So that's their deadline for the submission of plans.
Okay. Now, a motion on that?
Motion.
By Zakarelli, second by Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension seven in favor? Number eight is old eight, Montauk, seventy-six Montauk High is off the agenda. Number nine, Old Stables at Spion is off the agenda. So we jumped to number ten, Gold Coast Development, Anthony, that's you.
Yep. All right. So this is a two lot subdivision on Jagger Lane in West Hampton. The property is in the R forty zoning district. I have it up on the screen here. It's got an existing single-family residence there. Back in the day, this property actually was three separate parcels, one up here, one down here, and some little thing going on back here. But the properties have merged since then. The applicant's looking to do a two lot subdivision, basically to create a lot down here. You might recall, although there's enough lot area to get two lots, they're going to need some relief, some lot area, a lot with, lot with relief for this lot, because they designed it to maintain setbacks. So the existing residence, which is over a hundred years old, doesn't need to be relocated. So we have a two lot subdivision, just looking to create the second lot down here. Needs a little relief from the zoning board. We had a public hearing on this. And so we have a pre-application report that I had sent to the board that I'll go through. Then it's also in the high priority, high priority water quality improvement area. So that's in the report as well. I went through a description of the property, what they're doing. In terms of compliance with zoning, as I said, as designed, they need to get relief from the zoning board. So we would use these comments as any referral comments to the zoning board. In terms of a standard plan, that's what we're doing here. We're not requesting a cluster in this case, as there's no adjacent open space. This will be a minor review as a two lot subdivision. This is a type two action pursuant to secrets, and no further environmental review is required. It's not subject to the Long Island Works Housing Act. In terms of conformance with the comprehensive plan, there was nothing specific about this property or the area, but it's consistent with the land use and zoning, so I put that in there. In terms of the park requirement, it's just one additional lot that's being created, and there's an existing residence. So there would just be a payment of a park fee, which is twenty-five hundred dollars right now. That's what they would be subject to. We had a public hearing on July twenty-third, which was closed with the thirty day written comment period. Neighboring residents provided comments and questions about the nature of the subdivision, as well as concerns with the general state of the property. You might recall, there was some concerns about the property being somewhat unkempt in some degree there. The applicant has since cleaned up a lot of the site, so that's been addressed. We did referral comments, the fire prevention, town fire prevention, the area served by public water and fire hydrants. We got comments from the town engineer. They're generally standard engineering comments. Most of it's based on the assumption, if there is going to be a common driveway, we'll have that discussion. And if we didn't do a common driveway, a lot of these then would probably be amended. So we'll we'll talk about that. The conservation board, we had comments. Basically, there's some wetlands behind the property. And basically, what conservation board was saying is that this property is outside the jurisdiction. This property is largely outside of the jurisdiction, but a portion of it might fall within that hundred-foot buffer requirement. So assuming that's the case, then we would have a covenanted buffer or or an easement on this property covering the hundred-foot setback from the wetlands. So when they do the the 100-foot setback from the wetlands. So when they do the final map and they put this setback on there, we could, we could figure out how much of a buffer it would be. What else they say in there? It's in the high priority water quality improvement zone, so we've incorporated that into our approval. They noted here, and we also got comments from the DEC, that it's within an area of concern for the northern long-eared bat. They'll be required to go to the DEC and apply for whatever permits are necessary, and the DEC will impose whatever conditions, usually a time period that they're allowed to do any clearing or construction, and that would be subject to a DEC permit. Here, they're recommending pervious materials for driveways. We have an existing driveway already, so we could incorporate that if we wanted to. Then they note here that the town's GIS indicates that there's a conservation easement. Town GIS indicates that there's actually a conservation easement covering this portion of the property. We discussed this. We've had the title search submitted. We've done the research. It doesn't appear there's actually an easement attached. It looks like it's a mistake from GIS, and I'll get to that when we get to that section of the report. No comments or no recommendations from the Trails Advisory or the West Hampton Fire District. Again, New York State DEC says that the subdivision itself is not a regulated activity, so the subdivision itself doesn't require a permit from the DEC. But the subsequent development of the lots may require a DEC permit. So the applicant is advised that they may need to secure the permits, and we'll make sure we incorporate that into any approval at the final stage. Landmarks had no specific recommendations, other than the retention of more mature trees. They say it's feasible on the southern lot. No comments from the health department and no comments from the citizen advisory committee. So my recommendations, number one, that the staff report would serve as comments to this EBA. Number two, we talk about the conservation easement. Like I said, we've looked through a conservation board. A conservation board never required an easement. There was no planning board required easement. The title search was sent to Kathleen. There was nothing in there that showed an easement. I spoke to Ross and GIS. He didn't come up with anything that showed an easement, so it seems like it's just a mistake, so. But I wanted to note that since the town's record showed something there. Number three, the septic system requirement, the new innovative system will be required for lot two. Because it's vacant. With respect to lot one, any substantial improvements to that house would require an upgrade to the septic system, so that's noted in here. It's also noted, and I just, it's really just to put the applicant on, on alert. When they apply to the health department, and I've explained this to the board before. The health department may come back and raise an issue about the existing septic system on the existing house. If the health department does, in fact, require that the septic system on the first, on the existing resident be upgraded, it will need to be upgraded to a new innovative system. So I just, I wanted it to stay that in there. Again, number four pertains to the DEC relating to the the long-eared bat, any requirements from that. Buffers along the southerly and easterly property lines and along Jagger Lane. You know, we may want to do something here. There's probably going to be a buffer back here because of the wetland setback. So we could have that discussion. You know, as for this property line, you know, going out there and taking a look, there's a hedge that traverses the whole property line up here. There's actually an existing driveway that serves the lot back here, and then some vegetation along here. So I don't know that additional buffer down here is necessary, but the board could have that discussion with the applicant. I know he's here. A single common driveway and utility easement serving both lots. Again, there's an existing driveway for this lot. I know the applicant has some concerns about the common driveway. I put it in there so the board could have the discussion. I've been up and down Jagger Lane. It's not really that heavily traveled. Doesn't seem to be a major issue there, so I left that for discussion, just because it's one of those cases where I wasn't entirely certain that it was necessary. The applicant shall show all the required wetland setbacks on the final map. That includes the 100, 125, 150, and 200-foot setback. Just so we could see and verify what's actually in the jurisdiction of wetlands. A 292 referral will need to go to the conservation board. A covenanted buffer or conservation easement covering the portion of lot one within 100 feet of the wetlands boundary. Again, the 100-foot setback will fall somewhere back here, and we normally do some type of covenanted or easement for the buffer. I left that highlighted for discussion, because the planning board could either do it as a covenanted buffer associated with the covenant that you will require for the subdivision, or they could require an easement. It's not going to be a substantial area on this property, so I don't know that an easement is necessary, but it could have that discussion. Trees with a 24-inch DBH or greater shall be noted on the plan and preserved to the maximum extent possible. I just want to note in here, like we normally do, that it says that trees with a 24-inch DBH or greater outside of the building envelopes, you normally put in there. And then compliance with the requirements of the town engineer, compliance with the requirements of the Office of Fire Prevention, as it pertains to driveways and house numbers. And then the final application shall include the health department approval. So that was basically it. Like I said, the applicant's here, and I think he wants to have a discussion with the board about the common driveway and about the buffer along, you know, the southerly property boundary right there. And as we said, as for the buffer or conservation easement, it does not make a difference to me. I don't have a strong recommendation either way, as long as we count for the 100-foot.
Well, we can have a fence, a limiting fence there.
Yeah, like I said, the key is that we want to, we want to make sure we incorporate the 100-foot setback into our approval with the proper legal document to protect it. So the applicant's is here. It's Bill DeConza, and.
Anthony, before the applicant speaks, can you please just explain to me, I note here, it says it's in the New York State Archaeologically Sensitive Area. What prompts that designation?
Do I say that in there?
Am I looking at the wrong? Whoops. Is it?
I don't think.
Wait, wait, wait. Oh, I apologize. No, I was looking at the next, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I did, this one I don't believe is actually in the archaeological sensitive.
No, I apologize. I circled it on the next one to ask.
But just, just so you know, Robin, to answer your question, in our town GIS, the state's archaeological sensitive area map is, is an overlay in our GIS system. So when we put it on, it shows exactly where the archaeological sensitive areas are in town.
And what is this usually, is it, is it Indian? I'm just trying to understand what they're, what, what kind of.
You know, it's, it's, it's just, it's considered the New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area, so the presumption is that, you know, whatever it was, whether it was, you know, Native Americans, whether Chinook or specific to another area, it was just an area that could potentially have artifacts associated with those time periods.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking.
Not at all. Is Bill here, or?
Who, who do you need to let in?
Bill DeConza.
No, I don't have a Bill DeConza.
Anyone from that office?
If you can raise a hand, I have no hands.
You know, I spoke with the applicant today. He didn't actually seem to have any issues with the, you know, some buffering here, and obviously the covenanted buffer back here for the wetlands. His only concern was this down here, only because, as I had stated to the board, there's an existing hedge and vegetation that separates and has a driveway coming down here. So he didn't think that was really necessary. And he did have concerns about the common driveway, which I know he did not want to do, so.
So Anthony, I have a question.
Sure.
The driveway as it stands, after they subdivide, will be on the other parcel. So how are they going to handle that?
What was that? I'm sorry. Say that again, Jackie?
The driveway is on the other parcel, if this goes, the subdivision goes through.
Yeah, there's an existing driveway on this lot, serving this, this existing residence. The applicant basically just wants the ability to have a second driveway to serve this lot. As opposed to a common driveway serving both lots.
I have someone coming in.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank God. I've been here watching all this all afternoon. I apologize. I, somehow, I don't know why I wasn't there. Hello. I'm Bill DeConza for the applicant's property at Jagger Lane.
Bill, so we went over the recommendations and, you know.
Yes, I heard everything you had to say, Anthony, and I thank you. And for the board's identification, Anthony was very helpful, but I'm sure you know he's a helpful guy. I'm happy I'm not in an archaeological area. The two things that we, that came up, when we did this, we were trying to recreate the lots that had previously existed up until the early 90s. And that's why, you know, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel with this parcel. Ideally, along the, for the buffers, along the southern portion of the new lot to be created. Yes, along there. I guess when they approved the flag lot for the building that's in the back, the house that's in the back of us, they required a planting buffer to go in. So there is a tall line now of 15-to-20-foot evergreens that run along that property line that the neighbor had put in, lining that driveway. So I don't see any benefit for us to put one on the other side of it. We might actually, you know, block it and cloud it out or stop the sun from getting to it. Our buffer is along the line of their buffer. So along, that's, that's the southern property line buffer. As, as far as the easterly line buffer, I guess we'd want one there also, because we don't want to look into the neighbor's backyard or front yard at that point, any more than he'd want to look into our rear yard. As far as the setback from the, the water, tidal war there. We have 100 feet from the existing barn to the rear property line, and then we go a certain amount of footage beyond that before you reach the water, the the, what do you call?
Wetlands.
The wetlands. That's a term. One of those days. The wetland. So we wouldn't be looking to go anywhere into that area beyond where the garage exists anyway. So there's, there's no problem with demarcating that or doing whatever you'd like to see there. I don't know if you want to see a planting buffer in there. Usually, they don't like other things planted in wetlands, but we'll do whatever the board would like to see in that area. As far as the driveway is concerned, we would like the new lot to have its own driveway. And because the existing driveway will no longer be serving the existing house, because as you go down the driveway and go into the area behind the existing dwelling, that's where they want to put the pool and any backyard amenities. So we really don't have any space for a garage. We'd like to be able to put a new driveway for the existing dwelling to the north of the, of the property, north of the house, just north of the house. There's a 25-foot-wide Suffolk County planting and recharge area, and then we can come in another 25 feet. So any curb cut would be 50 feet off the corner. And in the area, there's, there's several that are a lot closer than that. And we'd like to be able to put its own curb cut for the new lot. Question for the board, if I may. If we, we thought we'd make it easier by recreating the former lots, but if I were to slide the division line a little bit north, where the asphalt driveway is, a little bit north to give that lower, the new lot, a little bit more area and take a little bit, we have 47,000 on a proposed for the top lot, and I think it's 36,000 for the lower lot. If I could slide that up a little bit, maybe get that up to like 39,000 for the lower lot, and that would actually give me a little more room to put the driveway on the new lot. Does the board have an opinion on that? It gets more into conformity with the lot areas. And I just want to know if you have any thoughts on that.
So you, just to clarify, you would be giving up that bluestone driveway?
Yes.
You want to install a new driveway where the cursor is?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
So if you move that second lot, lot two, north.
Right.
Somewhat.
Right.
What you're saying is that you could put some, a driveway in there?
I could put a driveway in there, and I could pick up another 3,000 or 4,000 square feet for the new lot, bringing it almost, almost up to the 40.
You've got driveways in there. Dennis, what do you think? I mean, common driveway for at least the first 20 feet.
Yeah, I mean.
Got it in there, you know?
Jagger's a pretty, you know, Jagger's a pretty heavily trafficked road. And, you know, even though it's got a lot of stop signs on it, it's certainly going to be beneficial of a, a central curb cut. But, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, there seems to be sufficient area. What, what, what's the distance between the northern part of that to?
55 feet. 55 feet, and then you have another 30 feet of the county area. So you're about 90 feet from the house to Sweetgrass.
Yeah. I mean, as a rule, we, we, we sort of look, I think, at 50 feet to keep down from an intersection, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I could give you that. I could give you that, because the, you had 25 feet from the county and 25 feet from me, and I could do that. I just, the existing driveway, once it's separated, again, I have no place to put a garage if I use the existing driveway for the old house. Because in that backyard, that's where they're going to be putting, you know, whatever amenities. They have a pool or whatever. So I don't, I can't put a garage on that side. I'd put a little garage off the north side of the house, probably.
Attached to the house.
Yeah. And still have a lot of area, and then a whole big forest between the house and Sweetgrass.
Yeah.
The, the applicant is saying they want to move the driveway for the existing house, so, and he doesn't want, he doesn't want to use what we are considering a common driveway for both houses.
That's correct.
It seems to me it makes sense to use a common driveway. For the house to the north, the new house to the south.
I just can't have a garage then.
Well, you're going to change the garage. You can change the garage on lot one into a pool, you said, right?
The, the rear yard is going to be used, yeah, for a pool.
You're going to take that garage down?
Yeah, yeah, pool, ban, and all of that stuff.
So you're not going to put a garage, so you have to put a garage somewhere close to the house.
I, I can't if I keep that driveway, because then I'll be sitting, you know, a few feet off my lot line. That's why on the other side, the north, where I have 55 feet of my own property and 25, 30 feet of the county property, you know, that's where it would be kind of innocuous. And there are a lot of curb cuts right across that Sweetgrass street. There's a curb cut closer to the corner than my new curb cut will be. There's a lot of wraparound driveways that have curb cuts on the corner.
I don't know. I think, what do you think, Anthony?
You know, like I said, I put it in my report, because I, and I explained to the applicant that the planning board often looks at common driveways when we're dealing with this. So, you know, I understand that. And like I said, just having traveled down the road, you know, sometimes, you know, when we do common driveways for flag lots, that, you know, there's any number of reasons why we would do it. Again, this way, I wasn't, I wasn't, you know, I usually tell the board, let's do a common driveway. We incorporate them in many, many subdivisions. Just when I happened to do my site inspections that year, I dealt with another property out here some time ago. I just wasn't married to, to either or, to be quite honest. Just in, you know, based on my observations out there. But nevertheless, it's in the report, because I know we look at common driveways when we do these, so.
I think the large, the lots are large enough to accommodate two driveways, really. I mean, there's no overwhelming, you know, I, I, I'm in favor of imposing them when there's, when there's a strong planning consideration, safety consideration. Here, I don't think one exists, and it would allow him to move the garage to the north side.
Yep.
It's consistent with the other homes. I, I'm pretty familiar with Jagger, Tanner's next.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of double drive, you know, people have the move driveways and.
Can we see this revised with the garage, where he's going to put a garage? Can we see this revised with the garage where he's going to put a garage?
Um, you know, we can, we normally don't ask them, but the presumption is that it would be somewhere on this side of the.
Exactly, yeah.
House. And then the driveway would come in and sort of go to it there and then we would have one here. You know, what we could do is, you know, incorporate language that ensures this driveway is at least 50, whatever feet away from any intersection. And that the driveway for this lot be, you know, separated from this one as much as possible. So that they're separated, you know.
I, I don't have a perception of how many curb cuts are on the immediate area. Do the curb cuts end up from across the street lining up with this one? I don't know how it's going to affect traffic by increasing the curb cut. And I'm, that's the only thing that's making me uneasy. I don't have enough knowledge to understand how it'll affect the traffic pattern and the turning patterns, site views.
Well, so we don't have any site issues out here on this property. The best my aerial could show is in the immediate area. You can see the property across the street here has a loop driveway. Here's the existing driveway serving the lot.
You mean property in the south, property in the south has, has two curb cuts, you see it?
Yeah, it looks like.
There's a lot of circular driveways. And if you go up north, you'll see right across Sweetgrass, I don't know if you can go a little higher up. Right there, right there. See how that guy's driveway is a lot closer to the intersection than my driveway will be? I mean, if you want to tell me, I've got to be 50 feet from the intersection, I'll make sure my driveway isn't any closer than that or whatever.
And you're getting, you're getting rid of one curb cut?
No.
You will.
Each lot would have its own curb cut.
Right. Well, yeah, but the one in the middle goes away.
Goes up here.
Yes, yes, yes.
As I say, if, if, if there's overwhelming planning or safety consideration, that would be one thing, but here there really isn't.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. I'm not familiar enough to make an educated decision whether I am doing something here that's going to make the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Anthony, I think Anthony communicated that as well.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, Robin, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you can answer her first. I have another question.
Yep. You know, Robin, like I said, I'm usually pretty clear if I think a common driveway is necessary, I will tell the planning board, I think we need to have one here. This case, I, you know, I'm sort of with Dennis, having been out to the area, I don't think there's any major concerns, traffic issues with an additional curb cut on, on Jagger.
And I'll take your recommendation because I'd hate to tell the, the, the owner that they couldn't have a garage or, you know, I have no, if you have no objections, I have none.
Yep, that's why I left it open for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
So my question is, can you just show where the driveway is that's going to this parcel in the back?
That runs right along our southern property line. There's one long driveway. It peels off into the front house and it goes all the way along the property line to the back house.
And so the buffer is on your side of the property?
No, he put in a buffer along his side. You'll, you can see on the survey and it shows row of trees. And geez, they gotta be at least 15 to 18 feet right now, an evergreen wall that, it's really quite nice. That goes all the way along that.
I see. So the driveway's on the other side, yeah.
Yeah, and then they have the, 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 the trees over here.
Yes.
So where are you thinking of the driveway for the lot two?
Um.
I would imagine somewhere in the middle here, probably.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's not really contemplated yet, specifically where. But it'll be, it would be a safe distance from both of the other driveways, obviously.
No objections.
Yeah, my, my, my only other comment is that if it was a shared driveway, that would, they, that would be close to the existing house. So it, it would not be a positive for that house to always have another car from another house.
That's true.
By. So, you know, I think that's, that, that's a negative for the existing house.
You know what would happen also, Gloria, is their only spot to put a garage is on the north side of that existing house. They use the same driveway they'd have to cut off and they'd run their driveway right in front of the existing house, basically.
Oh, yeah, it would be careful.
Along to get to their garage.
Yes, you'd have to drive right across the front lawn.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm agreeing that I took two driveways.
Okay, so we can.
Anthony, I have a quick question. Was testimony about debris or something at the public hearing?
Yeah, and I said, they.
Cleaned it up right afterwards, after that meeting. But we've had some stuff. I was out there today and we've had some big trees and stuff where there've been some storms as of late. So we got to get out there again. My question to you guys, and I know I can take out dead stuff. How, how much can I clear there? I know in here it says 24 inch outside the building of low pass to remain. But can I go in there and take down some of the overgrown shrubs and trees and stuff?
Concerned, you're better off not clearing at this point.
Okay.
Hold your map is finalized. We were just concerned about refuse and rubbish and things.
Yeah, no, no, we got rid of that.
Yeah, as long as that's been addressed, I think good.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Esaia has did a job on everybody's trees.
Okay, Anthony?
All right, so, you know, if the board's okay with that, I could fix the report. We don't have to do a common driveway, but we'll do language that maximizes the setbacks of the driveways from the intersections and from each other. In terms of the buffers, we're going to get the wetlands buffer for lot one when you apply the setback. You know, and if we want to do, you know, 20 feet along Jagger Lane, you know, with the exception that they come in with a driveway or 25 feet or 20 to 25 feet, you know, back here so they could, you know, because they said they were going to do it anyway, that would be okay. Again, the southern one, I didn't think was necessary. And then I don't know how the board feels. Again, we would be buffering this property from county drainage area. So, you know, I don't know if you want to put a covenant buffer on the property there, but certainly back here and certainly back here, and we could do something along the road.
And I would suggest a fence limiting definition so that the wetlands doesn't become a backyard.
Okay.
Hopefully proposed swimming pool.
With a lawn.
Yep. And to answer Bill's question from before, it's all vegetated back there, Bill, so you wouldn't be, you wouldn't have to do any plantings. We would just keep it as a naturally.
Absolutely, great. Okay.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so have we, have we addressed all the issues, Anthony?
Just to make clear, there's no buffer required to go next to his buffer on the south line?
No, I, you know, the, the planning board agrees with that. I, that, that would be my recommendation.
Great, thank you. Good.
Okay. So if we resolved everything, we'll have a motion to adopt the pre-app report.
Motion.
Moved by Dennis, second by Robin, all in favor. Posed extension, seven in favor.
Thank you.
Moving on, thank you.
Thank you.
To 392 Mill Road. Jackie, that's you.
Hi, yes. The applicant has actually asked for an extension to the September 24th meeting. There were some revisions needed to the common driveway and the final plat that we wanted to work on with engineering. So for, for the time being, they submitted a letter to extend that for two weeks to September 24th.
Okay, motion to extend, extension, Gloria, motion by Gloria, and second by Zuccarelli, all in favor. Posed extension, seven in favor. Number 12, the Brown Development Corp, pre-app report.
Yes, let me share the screen.
Yeah, someone coming in.
Uh, yeah, that would be Daphne Vaughn, if she's available. I'm here.
Jackie, you want to give us an overview?
Yes, yeah, I'm just trying to share it full screen. Can you all see that?
We saw the puppy again.
Okay, oh, sorry. It's a little delayed on my end. So this is the aerial. This is a request for a two lot subdivision, which is at 259 Major's Path. It is just north of the old SA oil and I think, you know, currently commercially used property to the south. From the aerials that it is mostly developed. We did discuss waiver of the cluster plan and I do apologize when we deemed it complete. We did not, I did not make a paragraph or reference to the waiver of the cluster plan, so that is incorporated into the report as there's no adjacent open space possibilities here. And both lots would be conforming in regards to lot size, although the lot width will be, need to be addressed through a variance due to the long narrow shape of the property. So here is the subdivision application. They are requesting an 18 foot wide flag strip rather than 20 foot wide, which gives a little bit more flexibility to the building envelope, future building envelope of, I think this is lot two. Is this one and two? Sorry, I can't even read it. And then this, this lot would need 93 feet in lot width where 120 is required, but that two feet would still provide for adequate common driveway to service both lots. So this driveway over here would be removed and they would both be utilizing. And as you all know, Major's Path is now becoming a quite busy road, so we would only be essentially shifting the one driveway to the south to accommodate both lots. So I can start going through the pre-application report. As I said, this is a two lot subdivision, R20 zoning district, Suffolk County tax number 90133-5. This property is in the New York State archeologically sensitive area, so Phase 1A and 1B archeological report shall be required. I stated here that all the structures on site do have either a certificate of occupancy or certificate of compliance. And it is mostly cleared in relation to the existing residents and previous accessory uses. If you'll see on the survey, this is actually an old horse barn that was, I think, back here. So this application submitted is a two lot standard plan on 57,000 square feet with lot one being 22,619 and lot two being 34,000 with a 30,000. So they're meeting the flag lot design requirement in the code for 30,000 square feet in the bulk of the lot for the rear lot. We did discuss the open space cluster and I am recommending that the cluster requirement be waived. This is a type two action. So therefore, the planning board's preferred plan is the two lot subdivision prepared by Twin Forks Land Surveying, and it does meet criteria for minor review. This area in North Sea was not specifically referenced in the comprehensive plan, 1999 comprehensive plan, although it is consistent with the character and the one family residential zoning of the parcel. As for the park fee, I am recommending that the additional lot be served by a park fee as there's no, you know, the size of a park in this property would not be sufficient to provide suitable recreation opportunities. Public hearing was held on July 23rd with no comments at the public hearing or within the 30 day written comment period. The Department of Fire Prevention had standard comments for improved, you know, basically stating the flag lot and shall be, the driveway shall come be in compliance with driveway safety standards and that street numbers for each parcel shall be posted and provided for each of the lots. We did not receive comments from the North Sea Fire Project to date. The town engineer had in-depth comments, but they're generally basically, you know, reiterating the requirements for common driveway design standards. And then also they noted that the survey did have Brown without the E. The property owner's name is actually Brown with an E, so that can be corrected at the final application. And they did state that it will require a SWIP and that the fee will be required. And the Speedy's discharge permit will be processed at the final application stage. And this is a covenant that they are asking for so that they comply with Speedy's. So that would be at the final application stage as well. The Conservation Board did have comments July 22nd, 2020, and they stated that the existing, they're seeking to subdivide the existing residentially developed property and that it's outside of wetlands jurisdiction, that it has been previously cleared of understory vegetation and there are several encroachments to joining commercial property to south, which my report does ask to have those encroachments be removed. And they did say that there are some significant mature large trees in the properties. So they are asking for the large mature trees to be noted on the final application, which I also brought in as a recommendation. For the Trails Advisory Board, I did not get comments from them to date. And the North Sea Citizens Advisory Committee, I also did not receive comments from them to date. So with this, I did want to just clarify because I missed it, sorry, in the resolution to waive the cluster plan. So this would say that the planning board recommends the applicant proceeds with a standard plan submitted by the applicant and provided by Twin Forks Land Surveying and that the planning board formally waives the requirement, cluster plan requirement as it's not appropriate in this case. And then two, states that lot one will require a lot with variance as the current survey is showing an approximate lot width of 93 at the principal building structure setback and where the R20 zoning district requires 120. And lot two will require a lot frontage variance for the 18 foot flag pole where 20 is required. It is my understanding that the applicant has pending applications before the ZPA for both of those variances. Lot one and two shall be accessed but via the common driveway and common driveway plan shall be submitted at the final application stage. The application, applicant shall comply with the Engineering Division comments from their memo of July 24th, 2020. We are asking that the applicant remove the encroaching, encroachments on the southern lot boundary, which appear to be from the commercial use to the south prior to signature of the final plat. And the applicant shall show and note the ownership and dimensions of Major's Path, also the nearest water main, as there is a water main just to the south. So we just want to have that noted on the map. And then I believe it is the applicant's intent to remove some of the structures on the proposed rear lot. So we just want to reference that on the final application survey and subdivision map. And then number nine is for submitting of a phase of 1A and 1B archeological assessment prior to deeming the final application complete. And then 10 is to show and note any large caliber trees greater than 18 inches on the final plat. And then standard street numbers on the final plat as well. And submission of a final application with the variances being acquired for a lot width and frontage for lot two and Health Department approval.
The only issue I, I already come across is the whole issue of the trees. Are there any area where we would designate a non-disturbance buffer? In other words, you can't really covenant a tree. You can, you can impose a non-disturbance buffer, but a tree, I mean, a storm, if a storm blew down that tree, they'd be in violation. And, you know, so are they, is there, are you contemplating an area of non-disturbance?
The area that I found to have a majority of the larger trees was along the north. So I did want to be able to see where those large trees are and see if it.
Why don't we just put a non-disturbance? Is it outside? I mean, it's a little small. I can't see Jackie, I apologize, but I mean, we could just put a non-disturbance buffer of some sort, no? So you're saying the majority of the trees are on that?
There are some in the front and then the most of them that I witnessed were along in this area here.
You want them identified first?
I want them identified and that way we can consider a buffer.
Okay, as long as we're not seeing, you know, we can't really covenant the trees. We can, the, the best we can do is, is non-disturbance and then a tree falls down, we're not in violation. You know, you can't go cut it down, but storm blows it down.
Yeah, so I was possibly anticipating a non-disturbance buffer on the north, but because there was disturbance to the understory, I really wanted to see where those large trees were and then we can evaluate it at the final application stage.
Okay.
That's good.
Makes sense.
Were there any other questions?
No questions, then we'll move to adopt the pre-app.
A motion.
And it moved by Dennis, second by Zuccarelli, all in favor.
I.
Posed extension, seven in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't talk so much, Stephanie.
Thank you.
We have on the canal apartments, number 13.
Yes, the applicant called this morning and asked for a two week extension on the action deadline. I had given you the staff report and the decision on that. So we should be ready for the 24th, okay?
Claire, are we looking at calculating an overall expansion on this property?
That is, it's some language is in that fact, yes.
Yeah.
So if you take a look at it, any feedback, you can email me, okay?
Okay.
Extension to September 24th. Extension to September twenty-fourth.
So motion for the extension.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria and second by Zacharelli, all in favor. Oh, the extension seven in favor. Number fourteen, twelve Foster. Matthew, that's you.
Yep, Charles, can you let in Wayne Brown, please?
Yes, sir.
Jackie and the board, just an update on this, I did receive communication from Wayne's office. Discrepancies on the plan, so they want to get that clarified and back to the town engineer. And so he's requesting an extension until September twenty-fourth to make those changes. Wayne can probably speak a little bit more to it if he'd like. But yeah, so it would just be a two-week extension that can prepare resolution, we're on action deadline.
I'll try to see if he'll be available tomorrow morning.
Wayne's doing his lawyering with somebody.
Okay, I'll talk to you.
Hot mic situation.
So we're extending it for two weeks. To.
Wayne, do you think that'll be enough time for Bob or do you want to go until October?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm trying to get my, two weeks is enough, but if it's not, then we'll ask for further, but my understanding is Bob. Wants to meet with the client and the town engineer to figure out some of the questions, because he thought everything was addressed.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you come around to some trees?
I understand that's part of it and what's not clear is, you know, we'll talk to Matt about that, where, where that's proposed, so we'll figure that, so we can, if we're going to do it, we'll show it all on the plan to make it easier for everybody.
Are you on September twenty-fourth away?
Yes, yes, and if, like I said, if for some reason we can't get it done, we'll.
And we'll bump it to October.
Yes.
Okay, so can I have a motion to, motion by Dennis?
Second.
By Gloria, all in favor. Extensions extending twelve Foster.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to Claire, number fifteen, GTB Real Estate Group.
Charles, if you could let in Carl Benakasa.
Yes, I will.
Oh, no. Take that from the record, please.
I think John wanted to recuse himself on this.
Yes.
Well, that's true, yes.
TB.
Give me to Carl.
Hi, Carl.
Hi, guys. No.
Claire, you want to give us a overview?
Yeah, I'll go and share my screen, just one second. So GTB Realty, or Real Estate, excuse me, is a. Pre-submission for a site plan special exception, this is the existing conditions. There's an old nightclub on the property which has a long history. Lots of comments related to that from the public. And here is the site plan, which is a proposal for a restaurant and a miniature golf facility associated parking. So if, unless you have some specific questions, I'll jump into this pre-submission report. Which now I have to reorientates. Ninety-one Montauk Highway, it's two point four four acres. So the demolition of the existing building, which is former nightclub and construct new restaurant, eighteen hole miniature golf. And the motel zoning district on West Hampton. And shows the improvements, there's a public, a pre-submission conference held on July ninth, twenty twenty. Comments received during the conference opposed to the project, issues noise, safety concerns with it becoming a nightclub and buffer. Comments received during the thirty-day written comments as follows, opposed to the project, increased traffic. Increased noise, light pollution, safety inadequate parking for employees, loud music and commotion during business hours. What are business hours? How will golf course be lit? Concerned with glare. Montauk Highway, a busy road, nice fun use for families, but concerned with neighborhood impact, the bend. Montauk Highway causes accidents, Seabreeze and Montauk intersection is busy. Small farm stand across the street already causes traffic issues, traffic study should be required. CPF should buy the land, worried that the excess cars will park on the side of the Montauk or residential street. Worried that the restaurant won't become a nightclub. So if they proceed, a full site plan application, lighting, landscaping, building, elevations, engineering information. ZBA decision granting variances identified below. Site plan details, parking, pedestrian traffic, circulation, drainage, sanitary outdoor lighting, landscaping, architecture. Building plans and elevations, material colors and EA F part one, long form. Projects of type one action is more than fifty parking spaces. A plain board would be required to make a secret termination prior to deeming the application completes. Restaurant should be a standard restaurant, no separate concession for miniature golf use. That was a comment during the public comments from the board. Variances requested are the reduced buffers on Montauk Highway and Booker Lane side for the golf course, the reduced setback for the parking from Booker Lane and possibly. The parking, if the board determines the uses are not considered shared parking on the single parcel. That's three thirty, one hundred G, and we should discuss that. The parking, parking requirement shouldn't be met. Said possible additional parking shall be provided for employees. As noted, the only four employees are noted in the application to date and there'll be more than four employees needed probably. The restaurant may need to be reduced to make the parking lot conform. Buffers for miniature golf shipping nets, buffer from the motel to be waived. Buffers for parking from Booker Lane shall be met. The second entrance to Montauk Highway should be eliminated, gravel parking, ADA spaces should be paved and walkway shall be ADA compliant. Traffic study, question mark, special exception standards for miniature golf use. An IA system recommended for the project sidewalk shown, lighting plan, landscaping, three thirty, one ninety-nine J. Elevation plans designed in the building, we'll take a look at that and then mechanical screens and referrals. So. Maybe the board wants to take a look at the site plan and have the applicant speak to it, some of these issues.
Sure.
Again, I'll just run through quickly. Maybe I'll show you that, that's the design of the building, which is very modern, but I think the materials are maybe good. And here's the site. So the buffers being reduced are here, they're providing like this dude with grasses on top. This is being reduced and if you remember, the motel is here. And then this is being reduced, this would be usually a fifty-foot setback from Booker property line. And that's being reduced in this case. So those are some, and then in terms of parking, they talk about there's being a shared situation with the restaurant and then the miniature golf.
So Carl, one of the issues I keep surfacing here. From us and from the community. Is buffering. And. In order to augment the buffering. There needs to be some consideration to reduce the size of the restaurant. Reduce the size of the building. So. Can we talk about that a little bit? Increase the buffering, particularly across Montauk Highway.
So. The buffering from Montauk Highway, I mean, from, you're talking about the transition yard buffering, because. I think that's measured from the middle of Montauk Highway, that's the.
Never, that's never been done before from the planning board.
You measure it from the, that's where the.
Property line.
From the property line.
But that's where the, the zone change is in the middle of the.
Planning board has only done that in the case of the railroad.
In the case of where?
The Long Island Railroad.
Well, if you're doing it for the railroad.
Try another one, Carl.
Well, in any event, this, special exception standards allow you to vary the buffering. Without going to the ZBA, so I think that's important to, to bring up, both the setbacks and the buffer. That being said, I think you have the power to address these without referring to the ZBA. But that being said, if you have specific concerns, I'm sure we, we're more than open to hearing them.
So how could you beef up the buffering along Montauk Highway? You're proposing a kind of.
It's an artificial doom.
It's an artificial doom. Of what material?
Sand, I would presume.
Dirt.
Dirt.
Sand.
Yeah, I guess it would be the same kind of thing as along the Reckler property over by the airport. Where they've raised it up a little bit and planted stuff on top of the berm.
What, what's the below part? Dirt?
It would be dirt or fill short, I can, I don't have that specific information, but I can.
But so that's one of the concerns, Carl, to augment that buffer. Not knowing what this buffer would look like, maybe we need a different buffer, I don't know, but.
Augment the buffer, like the, the composition of the buffer, the style of the buffer.
Yeah, I, you know, maybe if we could see what this buffer would look like, a doom. I would think that given the weather. The weather, the seasons of weather that we have out here with snow and torrential rains, a sand doom would be affected just like a beach doom.
At the stuff plant, it would be probably like beach grass or something that's deciduous, so.
That's correct.
It's, all you're going to see is a pile of sand. Off-season.
Well, really, what's the purpose for the buffer on the highway side? I mean, I would be more concerned about the buffer up against Booker Lane where there are residences behind it.
And there are residences across the street.
Well, yeah, but you're across a highway and you're already creating tons of highway noise anyway, so, I mean. I don't get it.
Wasn't the buffer for safety for people who were using, there was some concerns about people who using miniature golf courses. Wasn't that one of the.
Sure, that's a, that's a big part of it, yes.
So it wasn't so much a buffer to protect against the residency for neighborhood issues. I thought that was a safety, more a safety issue on that.
So people wouldn't walk across the highway and.
But that too.
Yeah, both, I think it serves both purposes.
Yeah.
I would be interested in what it's made of also and how we're going to maintain it.
Yeah, you might need to rethink that, Carl.
Yeah.
Okay.
And how, what about the side, what's the square footage of the restaurant?
The restaurant is twenty-four hundred sixty-two square feet.
Twenty-four hundred. One level? Single level?
Single level, that's correct.
And the golf course, the miniature golf course takes up how much?
It's about one acre.
Here, it's going to be, it's going to be the lighting. And preventing any asphalt amplification. The lighting is especially challenging with mini golf, as you know. So.
I'm sorry, it's a, it's a half acre, Jackie, I apologize.
Okay.
So as far as, often the parking lot typically we use. Use that those low bush. You know, eight berry or. Some sort of low, just to block the asphalt, I don't think it's kind of like a noise buffer.
But we also, we need to have some planted islands on this parking as well by code. Claire, for every, you hear Claire?
Yeah, for every twenty-five parking spaces. I'm sorry, for, when there's fifty parking spaces, you have to provide twenty-five and square feet of interior.
Interior planting.
For every space.
Not shown currently.
No, yeah, so that's a comment, they should incorporate that in their plans.
But we're talking about, we're concerned about the number of parking spaces already. And now if you have to put in some buffers, might that reduce what's currently shown?
Yes, and, and. There's, there's different ways to do that, but it's not that. It's not that big of a stretch, we should have it, it makes less, you know, reduces this, the sea of asphalt here. Or gra, in this case, they're doing gravel. But this is a long stretch of, you know, no landscaping.
Yeah, and it's, and gravel is noisy. When cars drive, drive over it, I, you know, from a, from a flooding standpoint, it's a good thing, but from a noise standpoint. For the houses nearby.
Carl, are you having a miniature golf company design this mini course?
I believe, yes, he's, he's in, like, the client is working with a designer who's familiar with miniature golf courses.
And so what about the lighting, as Dennis said, I mean, lighting, if they're going to be playing miniature golf at night. We don't know what the hours of operation are, that's a question.
Well, we would be fully dark skies compliant, I don't think, the client had no problem with that.
That's a challenge, right, to be dark skies compliant and play miniature golf at night?
Well, you need lower, you need more fixtures, because they got to be, what height would you be looking for, Claire? On those.
I, I think still residential, I didn't be inclined to do the lower.
So can they do a lighting plan? To show exactly how many they need and where they'll be? And if there's any trespass, do the photometrics?
Sure.
We didn't get that with this, right? This is.
No, this is usually. Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we just clarify, I have just one question about the restaurant again, I'm sorry if I'm repeating information given. The restaurant, the miniature golf is not going to have a concession, is that correct?
That's correct, the restaurant will serve in that capacity.
Is it going to conserve it by an out, a takeout window or would you have to enter the restaurant and take out? I'm just.
I believe you'd have to enter the restaurant and, and go to the state, the. The counter of the restaurant.
Okay, so it won't have a takeout window per se, where people will be lining out.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
So Carl, all the questions that Claire has listed are, you know, valid concerns.
Yeah, I think the two that we, we took, that we would just. Like to expand a bit are, one, you know, going to the ZBA. And our position is that you have the authority under the special exception standards. Three thirty, one sixty-two, seven C and D. To vary the, to modify the setbacks, both the transition and the, the dimensional setbacks on your own, without the ZBA. And of course, we can discuss your willingness to do that, but I don't think we need to go to the ZBA. With that, with respect to that, so that was one thing we wanted to draw to your attention. And then the traffic study. Noted with a question mark. I would just note that this. That this is on Montauk Highway, it's not a densely commercialized portion of Montauk Highway, and there is, the existing use. Actually calls for eight times the parking than we're proposing, so. I think the impact is actually going to be, this compared to what is permitted. Is, is going to be reduced, traffic is going to be reduced traffic impact, so I don't know that. Traffic study is necessary with respect to.
So you've got, well, you have three curb cuts here. Two going.
Two, two.
Going into the restaurant? Is that, or that's just a problem? Okay, someone just noted a bit ago that the, the golf. On County Route thirty-nine, you know, the golf course there.
Skating rink.
Rink and every, was packed. So, you know, you have to anticipate that this will be a very popular location. As a recreational site. So we have to anticipate that in our review of it.
Can I also ask, since Carl, you're inferring that we have the power to diminish by statute the buffers and such. I think it would be incumbent upon you to assure us as to the nature of these buffers, I think you've heard a lot of concern by the board. Regarding what those buffers are going to be made of, how they're going to be maintained and such. So before, I know I would be willing to vote to reduce it. I would need a lot more information about what is going to be defined, what, what is going to be used to make the buffers and how they're going to be maintained.
Of course, yeah, this was a pre-submission. Of course, we'll have much more information.
Claire, do you have a overview, an aerial overview?
Yep.
Okay, good, great.
Carl, can I ask you, um, is the existing building closer than sixty feet from the Montauk Highway property line?
Uh, yes, we have, I think, yes, we have a, we have a a pre-existing non-conforming setback from Montauk. I don't know the exact distance, but it is my.
You wanna avail yourself of that for the restaurant itself, because you're, you're meeting the sixty feet here. But if you're entitled to fifty, you could grab some more area, you know, setback here if you shifted everything this way. You know? So think about that. Because we do want, I think the board does want this buffer. Am I mistaken?
Yes.
Yeah.
We want that buffer. We wanna get away from the residential use.
Absolutely.
That's a great idea, Claire.
Yeah, so just think about that and to see if we can do that in terms of, you wouldn't need a variance, because you're keeping your existing setback. But, okay, I'm going back to the aerial here, sorry.
It's a great idea.
There's the aerial, Jackie.
Oh, what's, yeah, keep going. Can you go a little bit further? What's up?
It's the motel. See, that's the motel there.
Uh huh. Okay.
And then if you do do, you know, the buffer here, I think in any case you'd want something really substantial with.
Substantial. Is there anything on the property now? Is there, are there any substantial trees or?
That's a fair representation of the current state.
So there's not much, right?
Not much, no.
And this will all be demolished?
Yes.
Just talking about the parking again, maybe not a full study, but if they're going to make the argument that the uses are shared and you, you're gonna value yourself of a waiver, you need some information on that. So they're gonna have to do some type of analysis with that, so. Um, that's not maybe a full study, but like to, to have a traffic person professional look at it. That then we can, we can take a look at it, part of the secret review.
Right, like how many cars are going to go play?
Right.
Golf and.
And the restaurants and then, you know, because you want the restaurant to be successful and, and you know restaurants out here, they they can't eat their parking for, you know.
So Carl, are they going to pair the hours of the restaurant with the miniature golf?
Yes, I believe so. Certainly, they, I mean, my understanding was they would work somewhat in tandem. But I think perhaps the mini golf would go a bit later. Again, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure on their intended use of the property, so I would get clarification.
Okay.
I know there was thought of using them jointly, and then there's consideration to, you know, sort of bifurcated use, but I'll get clarity on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's almost like it would be helpful to have a total business plan of what they're thinking of doing, because you know, a restaurant could be high end fancy or it could be diner-like, which may then pair with the mini golf. You know, but I think if the applicant can give us some some suggested ways they plan to actually market this business.
And I'm envisioning a very robust takeout component. Given the current climate, the things maybe even in conjunction with the golf, with a big outdoor seating area, you know, I.
Where's that on the floor? Where's that on the plan? That's not there. We have a parking lot in mini golf.
Yeah.
That's, that's why I'm at, I think you're just, you're adding to what I'm saying.
Right.
Understand how they're gonna use this. And maybe we can ask that, I don't know.
No, I think you can ask. Absolutely.
No, how, how we're going to use it, I think is a fair question. Again, this was the pre-submission, but we'll certainly flesh out all those concerns and get you a full site plan application.
Yeah, I mean, I think that might help with the parking issue as well. You know, if, if it's, if it's truly tandem, I'm taking my kids to play mini golf and then we're gonna go in and get ice cream, then it's one car doing, using both things.
I think it's more along the lines of the parents drive up and the kids go play mini golf and they sit around with the margaritas.
Carl, do you have any other? You'll get us.
No, I mean, our big concerns was just that the ZBA and the traffic study. I think we're, we're happy to work with you on every, and every other aspect of it. And certainly, I've heard your concerns and will speak with the client and, and report back.
Um, do you wanna adopt it, or do you want me to freshen it up and adopt it at the next meeting?
Be beneficial to unless it's, are you on a time constraint here, Carl?
No, if, if we could, if we could clarify the ZBAs, that the ZBA is not necessary, that I'd prefer to wait and adopt it the next meeting.
Yeah, let's.
Let's do it. Let's change the language on that. And then I'll get a new copy for the September twenty fourth meeting. I'll get it to you ahead of time, so it's just a matter of adopting it, okay?
I've got an action deadline.
There's suggestions in this case. The applicant's here. If he had a, if he had an objection, we would just adopt it, obviously, but he's.
And Claire, you're okay with taking the ZBA out of this?
Well, I'm going to say, you know, you have the option of saying, oh, no, I want the buffers, or I want the parking. You have that option. These are waivers that you're granting hopefully, based on facts, right? So if you think the facts aren't there, you're going to the ZBA for the, the waivers.
Right.
So.
We're waiting for the facts.
Yes, you'll need the facts. So I'm gonna kind of leave it that, not, maybe not so harsh, you're going to the ZBA, but, you know, something, those language, like.
Thank you for clarifying that. I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's no action on this, and Carl, we'll hear back from you and we'll be on the twenty fourth a somewhat revised conference.
Thanks, all.
Thanks, Carl. Listening.
All right. Good to see you.
Claire, Bridge Petroleum. This is the.
This should be John Bennett and Bailey Larkin? Charles?
Hey.
I'm going to show you the plans first. And then I have that revised, updated report that I sent you yesterday.
No John Bennett.
No John Bennett. Do we have Bailey?
Yes.
Great. So this is the aerial for the project. Familiar with this sites. There was a lot of comments from the neighbors. And this is the site plan.
One neighbor liked it, the idea of having a convenience store to walk to.
Right. Um, so yeah, that's the site plan. And then Bailey, are you here?
I am here, yeah.
Okay, is it okay? Should we just go through it and then ask questions? Okay, great. Um, so this is located at five thirty five Montauk Highway in East Quogue in the Hamlet Office zoning district in the water quality priority area. It is sixteen thousand three hundred square feet. It is an application site plan for the demolition of existing gas station and the construction of a fifteen hundred and seventy five square foot convenience store gasoline station with overhead canopy in the HO zoning district as described. There was a pre-submission conference held on July ninth. The following comments, usage shall be screened. What are the hours of operation? Concerned about safety. Vacuum should not be in the rear. Amen plans seem more in line with the code, but need more info. So comments received in the thirty day ring comment period as follows. Access is an issue. Existing intersection dangerous. Proposal is a traffic safety issue. Parking plan obstructs traffic coming from Walker Avenue. Cars queuing for backup onto Montauk Highway. Access forced to Walker when some parking spaces are occupied. Access to sixty five percent of the space may be obstructed at times. Reduced curb cuts from two to one may cause cars to back into Montauk Highway. Variance is being requested and code not met. Not meaning the HO standards, not meaning the filling, filling station requirements. The building is not in keeping with the character of East Quogue. Appears to be a seven eleven type of use. What are the hours? Digital displays and signage. Opposed to the expansion of the gas station. Gas station is an environmental hazard. Convenience store will take away business from local delis. Building is too large, dangerous for local bicyclists. Gas station will attract trucks with boats and trailers. Vehicle speed heading east on Montauk Highway. Vehicle speed on Walker Avenue. Intersection of Montauk and Lewis, a traffic concern. Proposal is not in keeping with surrounding historic structures. Existing gas station results in a negative environmental impacts. Runoff occurs onto Walker Avenue. Potential light pollution, potential noise issues, traffic impacts to the safety of children at the park and nearby school. Design is better suited for an industrial area near my, a major highway. Large amount of propane currently stored on site, which pose a major threat. Layout is not conducive to delivery trucks. No attempt to use the existing building as convenience store. If convenience store stay within current footprints. Plan does not show the location of vacuums, air pumps or propane exchange currently located on site. Design does not include enough windows and front elevation. Reuse existing building enhance the operation. Favor it in expansion, favor of canopy, in favor of convenience store, which is well-run. To be submitted would be the site plan, lighting, landscaping, building elevations and engineering information decision. Granting variances to meet the convenience stores and accessory use and other variances identified below. Site plan and details on parking, pedestrian, traffic, circulation, drainage, sanitary, outdoor lighting, landscaping, architecture. Building plans and elevations in an EF part one is an unlisted action. The planning board will be required to make a secret determination prior to deeming the site plan application complete. Number two is related to the history of the sites. There was a pre-submission in two thousand eighteen. Based upon the review, the planning board issued a positive declaration for the project. The applicant has now submitted the proposal as a new project for consideration. The existing gas station, the filling station and service station is a pre-existing non-conforming use in the HO zoning districts. The HB zoning district with gasoline stations are permitted by special exception. A minimum lot area of forty thousand square feet is required and other standards are required. Playing board will use these standards to the greatest extent possible. Project proposes to eliminate the auto repair bays and construct a fifteen one thousand five hundred and seventy five square foot convenience store gasoline station with overhead canopy. Variance is required be the size of the convenience store, number of parking spaces, sixteen required, only nine provided. The canopy setback, the parking space setback in the rear, the rear setback, buffer setback and the building setback in the front. ZBA ZBA over time is determined that a convenience store of a certain size is accessory to a gasoline full station. The matter is considered on a case, by case basis, after considering a number of factors, including the size of the lot. Typical size of these stores are between six hundred and a thousand square feet. The last ZBA approval granted was for nine hundred and twenty seven square feet of convenience store. I'm sorry, I haven't attached that, but on a thirty four thousand square foot lot. Show the location of vacuum air pumps and propane exchange currently located on site. Issue through traffic, access and circulation of cars, trucks and trucks with trailers, landscape trucks and boat trailers. Design of the building, add additional windows on the north side. In a IA system recommended for the project, sidewalk shown, lighting, elevations, color renderings, mechanicals on the roof and the ground. Do the board want us to say more in terms of square, the square footage and the use on the property or? Those are the.
Well, it's, it's a proposed fifteen hundred and seventy five square feet. When we've done a study and a recommendation that convenience stores not exceed, they're anywhere between six and nine hundred, Claire, was that the number?
Yeah, but that is, that is actually the, some of those numbers, I have a breakdown separately, which I, you know, we can I should have provided also, but the, the actual retail part is, is around these numbers. So this fifteen seventy five is the footprints of the property. So the actual retail portion of it, you know, if you break it down, they haven't, I don't think they've provided that as of yet. The square footage. I'm sorry, it's not a very good, clear picture here. Let me see if I can pull up the floor plans.
Pretty odd looking. See, the convenience store says fifteen seventy five.
So they have the floor plan, but they don't have the breakdown yet of what it does look like substantially that this is. You know, this is the walk-in. These, this looks like walk-ins also.
Which is.
They're, they're open.
Does look large in terms the area. The breakdown needs to be made in terms of the retail area.
What was, didn't we establish some sort of ratio?
Yeah, that's just what I mentioned, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of area.
What we did is we, the board had recommended that it be six hundred square feet of retail for a pre-existing non-conforming use and up to twelve hundred for a a permitted gas station.
Or special exception, okay.
Yes, so that was your special exception standard. For the pre-existing, yes.
And they're, they're almost.
It would be the interior space, so they could have like, you know, eleven hundred square foot, you know, building and then have the six, be limited to the six hundred, yeah. You wanna, you, you wanna put that recommendation in there to follow those?
Is this gonna be our ZBA referral report?
We can make it the ZBA referral too, when they go to the ZBA, yeah.
Then we need to maybe bring it right to the top and bold.
Okay.
Yeah, because a gas station permitted with a minimum lot area of forty thousand square feet. And this is sixteen thousand three hundred and nine, right? It's about one third of that. Very small.
So we do spilling max for retail space would be six hundred square feet.
Are you gonna mention the policy in, in our policy?
You can mention that study that we did.
Given that it's.
I'll attach it.
Repetitive, it, it's, it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay. Um, any other comments like design or anything, but I'm sorry. Yeah, let me show you the sign. So that's the canopy. So it's, it's nice in terms of traditional material here. I'll turn it around too, so normally, but maybe a window here, right?
Yeah, we had a very good letter from an architect who lived on Walker. I wish, I can't get my hands on it.
I have that one.
Yeah.
I brought it to you. It was product, he's, he's the one who commented on this, that needed a window on this side.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is, was that his only recommendation, or he seemed to have a couple of points?
Um, that was the, that's what I gleaned out of that one. I'm sorry, I read a lot of them very recently. And then melded into that. But I try, I mean, I got them all in there, you know, the report, so he, some of the comments.
Yeah.
He said, well, there's one letter here with a lot of bullet points from Cantor. It says they're not in keeping with the historical use and character of the East Quogue Business District.
Right. That's what I, you know, that's this point right here. Design better suited. What is that? I don't know what that is. Um.
Can, can you tell us a bit about how it's being used now and how much parking they have?
It's, right now, I think, and we can ask Bailey too, is they're pulling up and they're buying gas and you know, once in a while, it's like a very open parking lot. Look at the aerial too here.
Yeah, it's predominantly just a paved lot, almost entirely paved right now with the gas pumps all the way on the corner of Walker Avenue. They're actually shown on our site plan also where the location is, all the way up in the corner of Walker and Montauk Highway. There's a, about a twelve hundred square foot building on the property that's, has a service base in it, which is proposed to be demolished. So I actually was, when I was reading through the comments, I don't know where it came. Uh, which is proposed to be demolished, so, um, I actually was, when I was reading through the comments, I don't know where it came from. They think most of the comments say that the new building is going to be five times the size of what's currently there. Um, what he's proposing is to go from about twelve hundred square feet to just under sixteen hundred square feet. So it's not a huge increase, perhaps they're talking about the canopy, but even then, um, about three thousand square feet of coverage and I think most of the letters. I don't know if they're talking about maybe the prior application, but they're talking about over five thousand square feet of space, um, when they comment on it. I think a lot of them were commenting on an increase in the number of pumps on site also. Um, but they're proposing to eliminate what's currently right on the corner there and relocate to have the same number of pumps, just relocated under the canopy space.
How many is that, three, three pumps?
Three, yep, just three and it'll stay the same. So, um, there's no increase in the number of pumps that are proposing and that.
The, the amount of cars that are going to be going in and out of it because of the change of usage of the building. It's not completely the side, just the size of the building that you have to consider. You're going from bays which do not generate a great deal of traffic coming in and out, their bays. There's cars that are up on lifts, they're being repaired, they come down and they leave. But you're talking about now a convenience store, so even if you were to go for the exact footage, or square footage that this building has right now, you, it'd be, there's no balance in the usage and the amount of traffic it's going to generate.
I, I think.
If you haven't been by this place, it is clearly the smallest gas station in the Hamptons.
Mm-hmm.
And the service bays haven't been used, Robin, for years.
Right, so I'm saying, so you can't say that the area of usage is going to equate to what the traffic usage. I think the concerns the community have are justified.
But that's part of the analysis, you know, that the ZBA has to make in terms of it truly being accessory to the gas station. Um, and, but you've already made some of that analysis by saying, okay, if it's pre-existing, it's a max of six hundred square feet, yeah.
The, the other thing, Claire, is that the comments from the public about the other uses, you know, the, the vacuum and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
It's not on the, on the plan, are they, are they not gonna have that?
I, that's part of, I, I put that in the comments.
I, yeah, I saw that, but I think, I, I mean, how does the ZBA even look at this without knowing? Like the, the floor, the, the site plan isn't complete, in my opinion.
Oh, this is a pre-submission too, though, you know, in terms of that, but.
Will that go to the ZBA?
Well, that's not, I mean, for, for you to determine whether that's an accessory use or not, that's not for the ZBA. You can, you say where the pumps are going and the propane exchange and those items. That would be typical accessory to a gas station.
Do we know what a cold canopy is?
Uh, oh, let's just see, that's a good question. It would have to be a minimum, maximum of twenty feet. Yeah, oof, now let's see if I can zoom. Bailey, can you see on your plan?
You got thirteen, nineteen, ten and four, nineteen, twenty-three feet.
Twenty-three feet?
Yeah.
Wait, that looks like fifteen and four, isn't it nineteen?
Nineteen and nine, so, and nine, nineteen and four, twenty-three.
What's the max height, twenty?
Twenty.
Okay, so it's.
Well, hold on, no, no, it's attached to the building, it would be actually thirty-five, excuse me, thirty-two. It is, I forgot that's not, it's not accessory, I'm sorry, I have to move it, but it's, um, it's attached to the building, so in case, this case, it's, it's a principal building. And so that it can be as tall as thirty-two, but it's twenty-three, right?
And where is it located on the plan, Claire? It's such a, it's such a unusual, um, site plan.
So they, they put the entrance here, you know, closing up the two curb cuts, which were pretty open anyways. Um, this would, this would be the entrance.
And the bays, these, these bays look quite different from the other drawing, these are one, two, three, four, four?
Pumps, you mean?
Yeah.
No, one, two, three.
Okay, one, two, three.
Okay, so I'm gonna put that ZBA information in the top, um, and then we can adopt this. Uh, but I will give it to you ahead of time and obviously if there's any problems with the language, you can bring it back up again, if you'd like to do that.
And parking, I mean, they're deficient in the parking completely, right?
There would be, but if you reduce the six, you reduce the retail down.
Mm-hmm.
There could be the argument for that there would be appropriate parking for the retail use, you know.
And these are standard car spaces as opposed to some of the landscaping trucks that come in with.
That was a good point with the landscaping trucks.
I mean, they are double the length.
Show circulation, right?
Circulation.
Yeah.
Then just a little bit.
I'm sorry, what?
Can you scroll down just a little bit? Go the other way, sorry, up.
Up, up and where?
Up, yeah, okay, so, so now the pumps are perpendicular to Montauk Highway, whereas now they are parallel, is that right?
Correct, right, this, they're this way, this point, and then this would be perpendicular, yeah.
So I don't understand the traffic pattern, there's one curb cut?
No, two.
You can come in this way.
Right.
Then go out, or you can come in this way and go out.
So they're proposing that Walker Avenue be used as part of the ingress egress?
Yes.
It is now.
Well, not real, well, yeah, it can be, but I've been there many times, so, you know, most people pull off of Montauk Highway, pull up to the pump and pull back out onto Montauk Highway, they never touch Walker Avenue.
Hmm.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, they're basically gonna be using a residential street.
Right.
I wonder if there's a way that we could configure something and close up Walker. I don't know how that would happen, would have to be circular.
Well, the idea, one idea was, and it's not ideal, but it is to reuse the building. And keep this as it is, you know?
How, how big?
This would be your convenience store.
How big is that?
About twelve hundred square feet.
Twelve, so it's more than, than what we would recommend. If there was a way to come in off Montauk, get your gas, circle around to the store and then go out Montauk and completely close up Walker, it certainly would take some of the load off the residential, uh, area.
I'm gonna tell you right now, the county's not gonna allow that. I don't think so.
Well, right now it's wide open, right?
Yeah. This is wide open, this has the two curb cuts.
Well, so is Walker, it's wide open, you can.
This is wide, yeah, that's why, the pavement, just so you know, this, this pavement was a really recent addition. I, I wish I had showed you, you know, eight years ago, this was not paved to this point and the vacuums were not back here and this is a recent upgrade that the app, the owner took on himself to do.
Yeah.
But there was a buffer to this neighbor of landscaping back here.
Uh-huh.
So I, this is not a given that he's given, he's like a pre-existing setback.
Right.
I'm gonna put that in there too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, could you note that in the report that?
That the buffer is being, being used now, the buffer to the residence is being used for, uh, operational.
Vehicle circulation, also, I, I, I mean, the, one appropriate limitation might be to eliminate the vacuum entirely outdoors, how can you, you don't want people pulling up at eleven, twelve o'clock at night vacuuming their cars right next door to the people's houses.
Right.
You know.
Can we also get a clarification, Claire, because I think what you just said is extremely important. Can we get a clarification for the report as to where the real buffers are supposed to be? Because this appears to give him a lot more usage than maybe he's been allowed to do and he's just done. And I think that that makes an implication to anyone else looking at it, that it's pre-existing to the extent of usage. I think we need to get it pre-existing to the extent of what was legal and not.
Right, he probably did, as Claire said, he did this without any permits.
But I would like to get that as forefront in the beginning.
Very important.
Okay.
Very important, that's a great, very important point, Claire, and I think that has to, um, we've got to define what is pre-existing here and what he's just done by usage.
I'm gonna put that in there. Okay.
What, what I, another thing that I find interesting is that although there's been a lot of public comment and most of it negative.
Mm-hmm.
I think the objections have been to the proposed expansion and, um, changing of the property. But I, I didn't see any people say, we hate it, get rid of it. Um, so maybe there's more of a atmosphere for, um, as somebody said a few minutes ago, um, upgrading it the way it is.
The controversy is centers around the convenience store.
Yeah, it's a convenience store, it's, look, look how many of these we've handled, that's why we had to come up with a standard. This is now the, you know, the new version of, of, of where we have deficiencies in food service, uh, supermarkets and such. And, and going around the seven elevens, now every gas station which is not marketable, it's not marketable for them anymore are economically feasible to have bays for repair, car repairs, we're, you know, cars. We don't, that is not a feasible business, so obviously what we're getting all along Montauk and we've dealt with this is gas stations wanting to stay economically feasible are, are taking their base, getting rid of their base because they're not feasible, they're not economical and putting in these food malls.
Yeah, I mean, it's happening all, all over, not just down here.
Claire, go back, go back to like twenty-ten.
Yeah, Jackie's putting it through, so you can see that there was a lot of usage on the property.
Oh God, they had car repair cars.
That was, you know, it wasn't nothing, you know, that was a nuisance to, I'm sure, to the neighbors. But you can see that there wasn't, it wasn't a blowout the way it's, is now in terms of being paved, there was some type of like.
Some greenery, yeah.
Yeah, there was something anyway, especially.
Along the residential line, yeah.
And there could have been complaints about even this that we don't, we're not aware of, you know.
Mm-hmm.
So it had a couple of pumps even when it was just a repair place, yeah.
Oh yes, there's been, uh, three pumps, there was, uh, to date, it's been three pumps.
Oh, that's.
Well, yeah.
Sorry, brought you.
Cleared and paved, mm-hmm.
So do you want me to, again, maybe update this report, because I think you have a lot to say?
Yeah.
You want, and then, and then we'll bring it back to you for, uh, before the ZBA, you wanna do that?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bailey, do you have anything else you wanna add?
No, I don't.
Okay, so, um, I, what I'll do Bailey is I'll update it and we'll just simply adopt it to the next meeting. Um, or, obviously, if you wanna speak to the board again, you can at the next meeting, but we'll, we'll put this on for September twenty-fourth, okay?
Okay.
So no action now.
No action, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Claire, uh, Jackie, you're on with the Conic Shores Development, eh?
Yes, um, I can share the screen, um, I do have to apologize, I was out sick a couple of days last week and I was working on this on Friday and it looks like my description of, on the agenda got saved in the resolution and my resolution got deleted, so. Um, but it, this is basically a numbers game, so maybe if John Zuccarelli wants to.
Anyone to come in?
Um, it would be Blair and Blair Gaza and Joe Gaza are representing this application.
Who else would be?
But, um, I, I did go over this actually with, um, Blair and Joe Gaza in January and February of this year. And then with the pandemic, um, I was slating this for like a late March meeting. Um, I did have to retrieve the files because we're under renovation, so I did locate the files with all my notes which I have with me. Um, so I can retype the resolution and I have no problem, but, um, essentially what happened was, um, a previous TDR, as you can see, um, in two thousand and six, which was authorized by the planning board, ended up sterilizing the full twelve thousand square feet of ascending parcel, when in fact only three thousand and ninety-eight square feet were actually needed. Um, it was an error in the calculation of the equation, um, and this was actually, some of the board members will remember, this was handled by Anila Ansar, um, who worked on a lot of the Ophal map, um, requests prior to, um, me taking over. And she was very good, but she was actually Pakistani, so, um, when I read her resolution, it seems like unfortunately the translation of English, actually, it was almost like she wrote the resolution backwards. Um, and this was to send, uh, development credits to the Aberdare map, which you recall, we just did, um, an amendment to the Aberdare map to allow for one additional development parcel, um, at, I think it's Harrison Avenue, um, in North Sea. So what happened was when they did this to, um, supplement this, they only needed three hun, three thousand and ninety-eight square feet um, out of the twelve thousand square feet, so eight thousand and thirty-two square feet should have essentially been left over on that sending parcel. Um, but what happened is her error in the writing of the resolution carried forward through the resolution and you can see, I have the file, there's lots of math, doing it lots of different ways, and unfortunately, uh, the resolution said to sterilize the full twelve thousand and you can see the working and the notes through the math, but unfortunately, the person essentially was over sterilized for the sending parcel and I'll show you. Um, let me put it in full screen mode so it's easier. Uh, but I'll show you, so essentially this is the twelve thousand square foot parcel that was used to land rights into the Aberdare map, but with the, with this area, we are in the CR two hundred. So it does benefit, so one of the intents of the Ophal map is to sterilize as much as possible in our five acre and our three acre zones and bring it to our lower category zones in the Ophal map, which is the R forty. So in the code, it stipulates that two point five incentive, so that two point five incentive unfortunately was kind of calculated wrong. There was cross multiplication and they just ended up using the wrong denominators and nominator, numerator, sorry. Um, so what happened was they ended up just in error sterilizing the entire thing. Um, so this is, um, the letter that we received from Joe Gaza recently, which articulates, um, the error. And you can see here, this is what was actually going to be needed. Um, and then it was actually equal to this in the R forty, but the math was just done wrong and the resolution was kind of worded difficulty that even when the attorney's office reviewed it, they basically mirrored and the private attorney mirrored the resolution language. Um, so basically it's a, it's a little bit of a math issue and this is, you know, what we would be reissuing in a certificate format um, to, uh, the original owner, which is David R. Bofill. Um, and what held this up from being on the agenda before is that the parcel now belongs to a Miss Amy Dupree, um, within that map. And so I didn't wanna reissue rights on a piece of parcel without Mrs. Dupree knowing that, uh, basically that parcel was sterilized completely when it shouldn't have been and we now have the letter from Miss Amy Dupree, which you see here. Um, basically agreeing that and understanding that that would essentially be reissued to the previous owner, David Bofill. So it was a mathematical error, you know, simply put, um, so this would re-establish that and allow for a development right to be allocated to the original owner, which is Dave Bofill. And these are the, this is the, uh, TDR that was recorded and you can see it sterilizes the full. And you can see it sterilizes the full 12,000 square feet. Um, and it did not need to be fully sterilized.
So this is the action, uh, Jackie, on the.
So it would be, so I, I'll make, you know, I'll rewrite my resolution, but it was just kinda like, whereas the planning board had a resolution, whereas in accordance to that, this much was needed, the TDR declaration was done. You know, and then I'll provide the math that that, you know, math was in error and only a, a certain amount was needed. And basically the 8,032 square feet can be reestablished through a development, development credit. Um, I did talk to, um, you know, Joe Gaza and Dave and Kathleen earlier on. And in, the current declaration, which just, you know, may cause more confusion, it would essentially issue a development rights certificate. But you can see some of this was, this was some of the math. And then, you know, this was just unfortunately done inaccurately.
Hello?
Yes.
Uh, I, I just, I see another error. I don't know if it's relative. But if you go to the letter dated June 21st.
Uh, the one signed by Amy Dupree?
Let me see. I gotta, I got down that part of the letter. Well, I, I'll keep losing that stupid letter.
I think this is, is that it?
Yeah. It's signed by Gaza, but it's taken, sent to Wilcox. No, that's not the one. It's 21st transfer of development rights. And it talks about 8,032 over 200,000 or 1984 over 40,000. Divide both of those by 5, you get 1,600 for the calculation. In other words, 8, 0, 3, 2 divided by 5 gives you 1,660, not 1984.
Of this?
If you look at it, this, the first paragraph. 1984 should be 1606 and 4 tenths.
Are, are you talking about this?
Dividing the denominator by 5.
Yep.
And that gives you 40,000, the top divided by 5. But I'm almost positive.
But you do get a 2.5 incentive when you transfer it from the CR 200.
He then increased the 16 by the additional 20%?
Cause the incentive is to have people utilize in the 5 acre where we wanna see preservation.
Showed, he should have indicated that the 1,600 then added the addition on. Cause otherwise it looks wrong.
Okay.
All right.
Not all of us are retired math teachers, Zuccarelli.
I'm not retired.
Not retired, yeah, you're showing us up. You're showing us up.
I still do it.
Good catch. Good clarification.
But I, I did go over this in depth with, uh, the Gazas and I went over the math. And that was the reason I didn't put it on the agenda till now is because I wanted to get my notes and make sure I had the file so that when I brought it back to you, I was clear on all of them.
So are we clear now?
So John, um, Trump should put you in charge of his campaign money.
Biden too, but he'll never remember anything.
Man.
Is Blair in the meeting? She was, okay, I just wanted to see, did you have any questions, Blair, or any?
No, hi, Blair Gaza here. Uh, no, Jackie, you explained something very complicated as, as easily as you could. Um, our, our only request is that the, the excess credit be given back in a development rights certificate form since Mr. Bowfill does not own the, the receiving parcel anymore. And, um, since the sending parcel, which was in, given in error, is still owned by Bowfill, that consent form hopefully, you know, solidifies everything and we can do it with a development rights certificate rather than having to transfer the credit back on to the, um, original sending parcel.
And amend the TDR, et cetera.
Yeah.
Which, uh, which district is it in?
Uh, this is in the CR 200, the parcel that was.
No, I mean, school district, sorry. Okay, cause I, I know you guys want Southampton, if you can ever find them.
Well, this is for Mr. Bowfill.
Okay, so we've discussed it and, um, we're voting to what, Jackie, accept the applicant's request?
To issue a development right for the excess of development rights that was, you know, previously sterilized, sterilized in error.
That's the language. Who will make a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil. Second, someone?
Second.
Or in? One in favor?
Yeah, I, I think it's, John should have done the seconding.
He's got his little beads there. Thank you, Blair. Thank you.
Thank you.
94 Dune Holding Road Holdings Corp. or Dockers?
Yep. This is just, um, the ZBA relinquished the lead agency at their last meeting. So we're just putting it on for our agenda. So the board, planning board can assume lead agency for this project. And then we will have on the next agenda, the actual analysis to make a secret determination. And I will get that to the planning board next week. So you have it, uh, a week before the meeting.
That would be appreciated, okay?
Be a lot of reading.
Yes. So we have 20 days.
We have 20 days from today. Yep.
And it's on the 24th, is 20 days?
Well, the 20, that'll be the next, that would be the, the next available meeting, uh, before we exceed the time period, so. If I, if we go be to the, if we go to the meeting in October, I'm over the 20 days. And, uh, I wanna stick within the timeframes here.
Okay. So can I have a motion to establish lead agency? Motion by Zuccarelli, second by Dennis. All in favor? Opposed, extensions, 7 in favor. Okay, we have 2 acknowledgements for signatures.
I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here in the first, Claire and Matt on those, so they were both signed.
So we're acknowledging Daniel Edward Warner, number 19. And we're acknowledging the Suffolk Hills Golf Club Pro Shop and Parking.
I promise.
Okay, so if there's nothing more, we are done till tonight. And everybody will be here tonight. Robin has to leave a bit early, but everybody else is here. Great. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Dennis and second by Phil. All in favor? Opposed, extensions, we are adjourned.